Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've seated. Where's Gloria? Come on, come on up. Give Gloria Aguilera, yes, a round of applause. They don't know what Gloria is. Gloria Aguilera, our count clerk one from our Finance Municipal Service Administration is our employee of the month. So now we can round applause because we know what it's for. So this is when I try and embarrass you. So Gloria, Gloria has been named the City of Turlock's Employee of the Month for May 2018. As a three-year employee with this city, Gloria is extremely knowledgeable and always willing to help her team. As our only certified Spanish-speaking employee in finance, she makes the time to help all customers with their Spanish needs and never complains of additional load. Gloria is able to maintain her composure and she never gives off negative energy in volatile situations. Gloria has helped to train new finance employees and done so by empowering them and guiding them to make informed decisions. Always treating others with respect and dignity, staff will boast that she makes them feel important and never complains about their many questions. Personal hobbies, Gloria has married our high school sweetheart, Jose, for 23 years. Is Jose here?
No, he's not. He's out cooking dinner.
There it is. I like this, I like. They have two children together, hence he's at home, Cynthia, who is 22, and Nicholas, 17.
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Impressive. So they're not at home.
Cynthia's at work, Nick is at home.
Okay, there we go, alright, sorry, hey, Nick. She enjoys spending time with her family and friends, her hobbies are watching her son play high school football, gardening, and baking. Give it up for Gloria. Congratulations. And your cool pin that you have to wear every day.
Thank you, thank you.
The microphone's yours.
No words. Thank you, I really enjoy working here, and this means a lot, thank you.
I love it, Gloria, thanks so much. Quick escape, I like that. Alright, real quick before we begin, Schedule Matters Item 8I has been removed from the agenda and will be adjourned as for the July 24th City Council meeting. Moving on, special briefings, we have none, public participation, this is a time set aside for anyone to address the council on any item that they'd like. If you have an item, if you'd like, you can fill out a blue card. If there's a specific item, you can fill that out and we'll wait for that time. So I've got, these are all specifics, so if there's anyone else from the audience that would like to address the council, yes, please come forward. Yeah, if there's, for general public comment. Perfect, come on up. The phone has been problematic in the past, but yeah, I think we can get there.
Well, the first thing I want to say is thanks to Wayne York, I don't think he's here, is he? I don't see him. But I want to thank your engineering department for your roads because they've been working with us at CSU Stanislas to come up with ways to increase and improve safety around the campus. And one of the things that they just did was put in a crosswalk, crossing, sing-a-ma-jiggy, that counts down rather than has a hand. And they also increased the time on it, which really helps for people who have some mobility issues. So I just want to say a big fat shout out to those folks. And then I wanted to come because I understand, I'm representing Be the Change, and I understand there has been a resolution, I'm not clear on it, but I understand there's been some kind of a resolution proposing the city oppose sanctuary cities. And so I just wanted to come and I wanted to just quickly read the resolution not in our community that you folks signed and sort of put into place. And I want to read it because I just want to remind folks who we're talking about here. So whereas bullying, harassment, and hate crimes have increased in cities and communities across America, whereas the county of Stanislas and the city of Turlock welcomes and values diverse racial, ethnic, religious, and national backgrounds, and further recognizes that our diversity is critical to the economic, cultural, and social well-being of our community. Whereas history has tragically taught us what happens when people stand silently by and allow acts of intolerance, hatred, and violence to occur. Whereas people often feel isolated, without hope, and helpless to do anything individually to end hate crime. Whereas people in communities across our nation have stood up and successfully opposed any acts of discrimination committed against their neighbors. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Turlock and its elected representatives stand up against bigotry, hate-based groups, and hate-based crimes of all kinds within our organization and throughout the community, and declares that, and I would like to emphasize this, that no one shall be discriminated against because of race, faith, ethnicity, national origin, legal status, gender, age, disability, sexual orientation, or any other real or perceived difference, and that we also resolve to stand together with all people of good faith across the nation in an effort to push back the rising tide of bullying, harassment, racism, and hate crimes, and proclaim, not in our city, not in our country, not in our community, not in Turlock. So I just wanted to remind folks of that, that when we, you know, when we think about proposals that would discriminate against members of our community, I'm hoping that you will think back to this resolution that you all signed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Doctor. Thank you. Any additional, yes, Mr. Supervisor Kiesa.
Good evening, everyone, Vito Kiesa, Stanislas County Supervisor, Mr. Mayor, fellow council, city manager, and it's not city attorney, for sure. And that was great, thank you for reading that, I think Stanislas County adopted exactly what Turlock had adopted. Something I want to talk about, I know that homelessness has been on the forefront, I know that I've heard multiple people talk about it, and I know the issue in the community of the distressed folks is, it's rising to a different level. Today at the Board of Supervisors, we adopted the CARE initiative and strategy. It's the Community Assessment and Response and Engagement Multidisciplinary Team. I was hoping, I know I just had talked to you, Gary, just a little bit, or Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, about this. It's something that we're doing with Modesto, we're hoping to be able to replicate this into all the communities. I can assure you that, you know, Modesto's issue is a little more, I think they've got about, in the last point in time count, they had 1,221 of the 1,661, which was 74% of the homeless in Stanislas County reside in Modesto. And Turlock was right about their 15% population, they had about 15%. So we decided to start there, but it's a real intensive study. And today I got a couple of statistics because the people that are leading the care team are Assistant Police Chief Rick Armaderas, Modesto Police Department, and Ruben Imperial from Stanislas County. And he gave me a couple of stunning statistics, I'm going to try and recall them right now. But he said in the last three years, 27 individuals, distressed individuals, had 456 interactions with police. Think about it, 27 folks accounting for more than 450 interactions. And one individual over the last five years had 70, 51, 50s, actual 88 engagements 70 times was taken in. You think about the resources that are taken, and we all know that we're not, we're not running long on police and fire, so every interaction is something else that they could be doing. So we're trying to target the most distressed in our community with a, what we consider a carrot. We're trying to get them a free pass, or fast pass, essentially Disneyland pass to the front of the drug and alcohol beds. We're trying to get them intensive therapy, but housing is going to be the most important component of all this. And we haven't solved the housing component. Because as we continue to do wraparound service, the continuum of care, if there's not a place, if there's not a path out, God bless you, then we're going to struggle. So it'll be something, but I'm hoping that Rick, I talked with the Assistant Chief today, Ruben wasn't there, but I said as soon as we get this up and running a little better, I'd like to come to the City-City liaison meeting and/or the City Council and have them present, because I know this is very important for the community. So, thank you all.
Alright, thank you so much Supervisor, you're always welcome at City of Turlock. Anyone else like to address the council on any item? Alright, seeing none, moving on. We have motion waiving reading of all ordinances on the agenda except by title. Do you have a second? Do you have a second? Okay. We have motion by Councilmember Dehart, second by Councilmember Skare, clerk, please call the roll.
Waiving reading of all ordinances on the agenda except by title, Councilmember Skare.
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart.
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Declaration conflicts of interest and disqualifications, left and right, seeing none. Disclosure of top 10 maximum contributors is within the agenda. Consent calendar, are there any items to be removed from this consent calendar?
Yes.
Alright, which ones?
H, and T, and U.
Alright, perfect, so, any other items? Alright, if there are no other items, what is the pleasure of the council with the consent calendar minus items H, T, and U? Alright, do you have a second? We have motion by Vice Mayor Jacob, second by Councilmember Dehart, clerk, please call the roll.
Adopting the amended consent calendar, Councilmember Skare.
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart.
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item H, Councilmember Booblaq, would you like to explain?
Sure. So I just, reading it here, it says that we're going to close the street for four hours for our state of the city. And it says that there is no cost to this, and clearly, we don't have many employees, we're, they're working really hard. So it seems to me that it makes more sense that we not spend that extra time, and in fact, we charge everybody else if they want to close the street. So I think it would have been best if we had not done that. As well, as far as inclusivity, I would have loved to have been asked before you set the date. I'm not here, and I would have, I really want to be here to support everything that's going on. So when something big like this happens in the future, I hope that we could at least have a polling, if, make sure that people are coming. Because I'd love to hear what's going on and see, see everybody there.
So I believe this is the, I'll sing you to speak to the street closure, I think this is the first day that the city manager's going to be sworn in, and I think that was part of the reason that date is chosen, but can you speak to the cost or the rest of the items?
I don't have a breakdown of all of the, of the costs associated with it. However, given the fact that we have combined this event with the swearing-in of the new city manager, we are expecting a larger crowd, and so we've, in terms of the early thoughts about how to set it up, we are looking at closing the section in front of City Hall, which would require some closures in terms of barricades on either end as for pedestrian safety. Staff, because it's on, I guess, you could say during work hours, there's no additional cost being incurred like it would be if it was after hours or something like that. So it's really just the cost of, you know, staff during the day that they, you know, would normally be here. And any, we have the appropriate equipment to close it, we don't have to rent anything. And then my understanding is that each of the different departments would be bringing out a display vehicle to represent the variety of departments. And so I apologize for not having all of the fine details, but they're still kind of in the planning process for that.
Is it similar to the last swearing-in that we did for the city manager, just the setup, is that what we're trying to replicate, correct?
Yes, the last swearing-in, swearing-in as you recall, was done in front of City Hall here in the courtyard area. But there is an idea of pushing it out into the roadway and kind of taking advantage of the open area there, given the idea that we're, because we're combining the, you know, the two events, and we wanted to incorporate the various vehicles from the different departments to have a place to stage. So, you know, we are open to any direction from council on the event, as you know, it's a city event.
Perfect, alright, any additional questions that comes from the council or the audience on this item? Alright, is there, what's the pleasure of the council on this item?
I'll introduce the first resolution.
Alright, do you have, alright, do we have a motion by Councilmember Booblaq, second by Councilmember Dehart, for the first resolution? Clerk, please call the roll.
Determining the closure of South Broadway between A Street and Market Street for the mayor's state-of-the-city address in conjunction with the swearing-in ceremony of the new city manager hosted by the city of Turlock is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, in accordance with Section 15304, Minor Alterations to Land of the SEQA Guidelines. Councilmember Skare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. What about the second resolution?
Don't move.
Do you have a second?
Sir.
And motion by Councilmember Booblaq, second by Councilmember Dehart, clerk, please call the roll.
Approving a special event permit application for the mayor's state-of-the-city address in conjunction with the swearing-in ceremony of the new city manager hosted by the city of Turlock, authorizing the associated closure of South Broadway between A Street and Market Street for pedestrian safety on Thursday, July 12, 2018, from 6:30 a.m. to 10 a.m., and authorizing the city manager to apply appropriate conditions and restrictions on the street closure. Councilmember Skare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. And on to item T, Councilmember Booblaq.
Okay, just for the sake of transparency, we paid a lot of money to start our branding and marketing, and it's gone kind of slow, and we've kind of stopped. So I just wanted to pull it off so that the community, if they were paying attention and wanted to know where we were and what was going on with that, and so, Ms. Pitt, if you could just share with the community.
Sure, good evening, Mayor and Council. Where we are is we have some small focus groups, some check-in with members of council about where we are with logos and taglines. Those are scheduled for tomorrow and Thursday, and then there'll be some presentations coming up probably in July. We're getting close to the end, but because June 30th is the end of the fiscal year, in order for us to be able to pay them anytime beyond that, we would need, we needed to extend the term of the contract.
And, but this motion tonight is with no increase in cost, correct?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Awesome, thank you. Any additional comments or questions from the council or the audience? What's the pleasure of the council on this item? Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Dehart, second by Councilmember Booblaq, clerk, please call the roll.
Approving Amendment Number Three to an agreement with North Star Destination Strategies of Nashville, Tennessee to develop marketing and branding strategies, including tourism for the city of Turlock, extending the term of the agreement with no increase in cost. Councilmember Skare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thanks so much, Mayor. And, oh, I think you're up for you, Councilmember Booblaq.
On this one, not necessarily, Ms. Pitt. So it's just for my continuing consistency, I still want to caution my colleagues that having the mayor sign on property parcels and changing bids and things of that nature, I just think that we're getting on a slippery slope, and I just want to caution everyone that maybe we should revisit this at some point.
And that made my points clear on this. Is there anyone from the council that would like to address the council on this item? Or the audience to address the council? How about the council? What's the pleasure of the council on this item?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Do you have a second? We have a motion by Vice Mayor Jacob, second by Councilmember Skare, clerk, please call the roll.
Approving the sale of a parcel of real property located at the northern portion of 401 Third Street, Turlock, California, APN number 043049055, to Hackler Rentals LLC, for the purpose of disposing of the surplus portion of the parcel and authorizing the mayor or city manager to execute all necessary documents in connection with the sale. Councilmember Skare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
No.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries four to one. Thank you so much, going on to final readings, clerk, if you'd please read the titles.
Amending Turlock Municipal Code Title VI, Chapter III, IV, and V regarding payment of collection charges for garbage, rubbish, and organic refuse, sewer service, and water service as introduced at the June 12, 2018, City Council meeting. Councilmember Skare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero.
Amending Turlock Municipal Code Title II, Chapter VII, Section 04, Regarding Purchasing Officer Powers and Duties, Section 06, Regarding Purchase Orders, Section 08, Regarding Bidding Requirements, and Section 09, Regarding Purchases Procedures, as introduced at the June 12, 2018, City Council meeting. Councilmember Skare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to, because your microphone worked, moving on to 7A, Pub Care Regarding the Proposed Annexation Number 24 to Existing Community Facilities, District Number Two. Hey, Katie. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. The project before you tonight is the 24th Annexation to Community Facilities District Number Two. CFD Number Two was originally formed in 2004 to help provide additional general fund revenue to mitigate the impact of new residences on police, fire, park maintenance services, and recreation services. Annexation Number 24 is for the Monteverde subdivision that was approved in 2013. The Monteverde subdivision was approved for the development of 109 single-family homes at 2531 West Twalney Road, near Home Depot there. Madam Clerk, could you confirm receipt of the following documents? Proof of publication of the notice of public hearing?
Yes, the notice was published on June 13, 2018.
Signed waiver and consent form?
Yes.
Completed and signed ballot?
Yes, the ballot received from the property owner authorized the annexation of the property into the existing community facilities, District Number Two.
Signed certificate of clerk regarding receipt of property owner waiver and consent form and the ballot declaring election results.
Yes.
Mayor Soysa, that is appropriate at this point to open the public hearing, thank you.
Thank you so much.
If there's any questions, I'm also.
Oh yeah, any questions for Katie? Alright, would you like to open the public hearing at this point? Seeing no comments, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back. There we go. What's the pleasure of the council on this item? Are the resolutions, can we take them together to your turn? Alright, perfect. What's the pleasure of the council on this item? Both resolutions, alright, do you have a second? There we go. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Jacob, seconded by Councilmember Skare for both resolutions.
Calling a special mailed ballot election respecting proposed annexation Number 24 to existing community facilities, District Number Two, Services Mitigation, declaring the results of mailed ballot election respecting proposed annexation Number 24 to community facilities, District Number Two, Services Mitigation, and ordering annexation. Councilmember Skare?
I got to tell you, when I first saw this, I thought you were annexing it to my district, District Two, because I said, alright.
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much, the clerk was all business on that one, she didn't appreciate your joke. Alright, moving on to item 8A, Scheduled Matters. Request to determine the closure for the Turlock Farmers Market hosted by the Turlock Certified Farmers Market is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act and approve a special event permit application. Director Van Gilder.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On May 9th, Brandon Follett submitted an application through our special event permit process proposing that the Turlock Certified Market be operational downtown on two dates, identified as Saturday, July 14, 2018, and Saturday, July 21, 2018, from 8 a.m. to 1 p.m. each day. This is a result of the Stanislas County Fair being operational during those two weekends, which result in the Turlock Certified Market needing to find a temporary location in order to operate. And so the application was submitted according to our process. It has been reviewed and evaluated by our special event committee. Given the council's past concerns about the impacts of closures particularly along Main Street, we have engaged the stakeholders along Main Street, primarily the property owners as well as the business owners. The Turlock Certified Farmers Market has done their due diligence to go out to survey the impacted businesses, to get their feedback on the identified closures, and we have received no dissenting comments as of yet. And so, based on all of those factors, given the temporary nature of the two days that are identified, the committee is recommending the approval of this event as well as the associated closure on those two days. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions or comments for Director Van Gilder at this time? Yes, Councilmember Dehart.
Ms. Van Gilder, just a quick question, have we got a a long-term solution in mind going next year and the year after? I guess when I began to consider this issue, what did we do last year, what did we do the year before, what was wrong with those solutions? How can we accommodate either of those solutions for next year or... And perhaps you're not the one to answer the question, but I'm just concerned that we, you know, having established the policy for downtown, what, what's the ultimate solution? Will this be a continuing request, or do we know?
Will the applicants here tonight, if they would like to come up and speak to that question?
Brandon, I have your blue card right here.
Blue cards.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Brandon Follett, I am the Chair of the Board for the Turlock Certified Farmers Market. Allison summed it up pretty well. We do enjoy our event at the fairgrounds, it's checked a lot of boxes in terms of hosting us, and they've been great hosts. Obviously during the fair time, those two weeks were displaced during that time. And so for the past two seasons that we've been there, we have not had a farmer's market. Mr. Palios has been generous enough to offer a kind of hybrid market at his establishment, which has accommodated some of the farmers over there, but not all of our vendors can participate. So just looking for an opportunity to, to be able to have that market and allow all of our vendors to participate as we have previously.
So you would see going forward this to be an annual event due to the fair?
It could be, we haven't addressed that at this time. Certainly that's, it's an ongoing issue recurring every year, so we haven't addressed that longer term. But it's something that, that could be an opportunity.
Thanks, Mr. Follett.
While you're here, do you want to address anything else, because I do have your blue card.
No, Allison summed it up pretty well. We've been operating for nine years, this is our ninth season, we're about halfway through our ninth season. And it's been very good, it's hard to believe, I was just talking to Mr. Cook about kind of the past that we've had, and we've been very fortunate to have been a number of locations, and we used to be right out here in front, and participated for many years, so we just appreciate the community's support and we look forward to continuing to thrive wherever we may be.
Alright, great, thanks so much, Ms. Ferrari.
Jeannie Ferrari, I've been on the Certified Farmers Market Board before, it was a Certified Farmers Market when the city had it. I just wanted to say that I'm the one that surveyed the merchants, and it wasn't just who was ever working there. It was the merchant, the owner, and if they weren't in the shop or the store, then I contacted them through email or telephone, but everyone was a clear yes, and so I was quite happy. Some were quite enthusiastic.
Perfect, well, thank you so much. Ms. Valeria Jimenez.
Hi, everyone, Valeria Jimenez. I am representing the Golden State Farmers Market Association, which is now the Central Park Evening Market. I want to say I'm actually really excited for you. I'm excited for what this means to Turlock. I think that this is a sign that we as a community are ready to move forward and progress. And in order to have community, you have to have unity. And that's the one thing I love about this city, is that there is unity. Even in the midst of little, little bits of division here and there, we still rise above it, and we still say we're bigger, and we're stronger, and we're better than the opponent, that we're better than the disagreement, we're better than the argument, because we care about Turlock. And, and I'm excited because I think this means that we're ready to go forward as a team. And I couldn't be more thrilled about teamwork. Whatever we need to do on our side, we're more than happy to accommodate, whether that means being on the street, being in our park. We are open to that, because ultimately, as long as Turlock gets the win, then we all win. So we're thrilled, we're happy to help in any way we can, and again, it's all about teamwork and unity.
Thank you so much. We'll put, any other comments or questions? Yes?
Yeah, regarding the setting of policy, does the city of Turlock have a no road closure policy on Main Street? Because I just heard some concerns about possibly moving forward with this and discretion. So Councilman Dehart was sort of getting on the right track, I think, about if this is going to be a usual thing, it should probably be put into the policy setting. Because if you're talking about what stores want now, but then they all of a sudden say they don't want it, I think that's how we got to the no road closure policy. But also I just heard right now about possibly being in the same park as where the current park, the current farmer's market is on Thursdays, that would eliminate the discretion. If there is a road closure policy, could someone answer that?
Director Van Gilder, can you?
So the current, uh, special event policy does have a specific reference to the closure of Main Street. And where council has directed staff at this point is it's, you know, recognize that the closure of Main Street is discouraged, um, with the exception of some key events that we have identified. Well, um, I can read them off to you very quickly. Fourth of July Parade Car Show, Turlock High Homecoming Parade, Festival of Lights, the Christmas Parade, and then it was updated to include the annual Turlock Pentecost Parade. So, there is not a black and white policy that says yes, no. It's, um, very much at the discretion of council, and it's, um, pretty much on a case-by-case basis considering a variety of factors, one of which is the feedback that we get from the affected property owners. So at this time, um, there is, it, the, the language basically reads, "The closure of Main Street is discouraged," which isn't very direct. And so, that's why, um, council at this point has not delegated any authority to staff to say yes or no. We have, we evaluate them, and then we give you our best recommendation following the procedures that you've established in your policy. Um, any questions about that?
Yeah, please.
Mayor, City Manager, I think we may wanna consider, certainly with the results of the survey that was conducted, uh, we may wanna consider a modification to that, rather than say discouraged. Uh, discouraged with the following exceptions, and then, uh, this is gonna happen every year. Uh, this is not something that's gonna just miraculously change to two different Saturdays or, or time of year, uh, to include such that we don't have applicants needing to come back every year. And so we may very well want to, uh, uh, consider, uh, a revised resolution that, uh, would include the farmer's market in that scheduled event of events.
I think, I think what's important for the community to realize is that as, as council are, when we talked about this, because this was at length, is that we wanted to make sure we protected commerce, we protected brick and mortars in downtown. And I really appreciate the legwork you did to go talk to those that would be directly impacted. And so that's really beneficial to me to see the, the yeses on there for this. I think it's a trial, it's a pilot, if you will, to see if this, this can work. And so, I think it's a great partnership, as Valeria said, um, as, as far as community to see if this could work. Uh, and so I think that that's what's the concern when you close down not just Main Street but other roads, uh, how it impacts those that are the brick and mortar, uh, buildings. And so I think that's, that's where I come from. It's the intent behind that.
So I would accept your amendment, Mayor.
I don't know if that's an amendment, it was just more my clarification.
More to say, uh, let, let's pay particularly close attention this year to ensure that we've got something that's gonna work perhaps, and potentially into the long run.
Absolutely, definitely. Yes, additional people, yes. Mr. Ward.
Hi. Mike Ward, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I wouldn't remove the word discouraged. I mean, these folks have a proven track record, so you could add them to the list, but I was here for the bike race issue. And even though it was a great event for the bikers, the businesses weren't real happy with it because it just didn't produce people. And so, closing Main Street is not the best idea, I don't think, unless you've got sort of somebody that's proven, and there's no doubt that these folks have a history, and they will help the downtown merchants. So, I, you know, that, just wanted to make that comment about removing the word discouraged. I, I like it there.
No, your fault.
No, I just wanted to make sure, yeah. Thank you.
Perfect. Any additional comments or questions from the audience on this item? Uh, is it a hand? Do you wanna come on up? Additional comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, sorry, I saw a hand in the back. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Uh, was the pleasure, is there more comments? Advance? Do you have a second? Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Jacob, seconded by Councilmember Scare, uh, for the first resolution. Clerk, please call the roll.
Determining the closure of Main Street between Palm Street and Center Street for the Turlock Farmers Market hosted by the Turlock Certified Farmers Market, TCFM, is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, in accordance with Section one-five-three-zero-four, minor alterations to land of the SEQA guidelines. Councilmember Iscare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. What's the pleasure for the second resolution? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Dehart, seconded by Councilmember Scare. Clerk, please call the roll.
Approving a special event permit application for the Turlock Farmers Market hosted by the Turlock Certified Farmers Market, TCFM, authorizing the associated closure of Main Street between Palm Street and Center Street for pedestrian safety, occurring on Saturday, July fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, from five AM to two PM, and Saturday, July twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, from five AM to two PM, and authorizing the City Manager to apply appropriate conditions and restrictions on the street closure. Councilmember Iscare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much for your work on this. Moving on, item B, requested determine city project number eighteen dash two-eight, two thousand eighteen SB one road maintenance and rehabilitation slurry seal is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. Uh, Katie, back up.
Good evening again. Uh, tonight before you is a request for an award of bid and an approval and an agreement in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand dollars with VVS International for City Project twenty eighteen twenty-eight SB one road maintenance and rehabilitation slurry s- seal, excuse me. Uh, this project will slurry seal various roadways throughout the city as identified in the SB one project list that was adopted by council last fall for the seventeen eighteen fiscal year. Uh, to create that list, staff used the twenty thirteen pavement management program update to determine which streets had a pavement condition index that was high enough to warrant a slurry seal. And the slurry seal is a resurfacing application, um, that's done, and it helps with the, um, maintain the condition of the roadway. Uh, these roadways that are part of this project are not within an assessment district, so that's why they're being done with an SB one project. As staff does recommend that the council determine the projects exempt from SEQA and approve the board of bid, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments for Katie at this time? Yes, Councilmember Scare?
Yeah, Katie, I just had one quick question. I sent an email to Nathan, did not realize he was on vacation, so.
That's why I'm here talking about slurry seals.
On the list, on the list of, uh, the roads that we have in there, were we talking about all thirty-two roads or just that's just the list we're gonna work from?
All thirty-two of the roads that are in the list, that are in the staff report, are part of the project. So all of those roadways will be done with this project.
Additional questions or comments? Comments or questions from the audience on this item? Alright, bringing it back. What is the pleasure of the council on this item? Alright, we have a motion, uh, by Councilmember Scare, seconded by Councilmember Dehart for the first resolution. Clerk, please call the roll.
Determining City Project number eighteen twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen SB one road maintenance and rehabilitation slurry seal is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, in accordance with Section one-five-three-zero-one, existing facilities of the SEQA guidelines. Councilmember Iscare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. And what's the pleasure of the council on the sec- on the motion? Oh, right. Uh, motion by, uh, Councilmember Dehart, seconded by, uh, Councilmember Booblaq? Please call the roll.
Awarding bid and approving an agreement in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand dollars, Fund two-one-nine with VSS International, Inc. of West Sacramento, California, for City Project number eighteen twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen SB one road maintenance and rehabilitation slurry seal. Councilmember Iscare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Uh, moving on, a request to appropriate thirty-two hundred dollars to hire ECO to clean dry ice blasting LLC to remove the calcium buildup on Califia, or direct maintenance staff to continue treating the water with chlorine for health purposes and allow Califia to patina naturally. Director Van Gilder?
Hello again, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is a fol- a follow-up item, excuse me. Um, as a result of the March thirteenth discussion, uh, that staff brought before you regarding Califia's current condition, uh, primarily the issue of the, uh, calcium buildup and, uh, due to the water staining. And so, um, at that meeting, uh, staff was not provided any direction as far as how to proceed. But since then, um, there has been additional con- conversations and concerns expressed by the community about her, uh, state. And so as a result of that, staff has put together a staff report that essentially, um, gives council, um, two opportunities, um, to move forward with a recommended cleaning process using this dry ice, uh, method that's, uh, outlined in the staff report, and that has an estimated cost of about thirty-two hundred dollars. Um, based on our research, based on the demo that was conducted, uh, with our staff observing, we feel that at this point, this is our best, uh, best attempt to try and, uh, get her clean. Um, you can also, uh, consider, uh, directing staff, uh, not to do anything. And that's an option that's identified in the staff report too, and allow her to naturally patina, um, given the fact that this, um, maintenance that we're proposing to tonight will likely have to be repeated in the future. Um, we intend, if you direct us tonight, uh, to move forward with the dry ice cleaning. Uh, once that work is done, city staff will go in and apply a sealer so that hopefully, um, as we move forward in the future, it will delay the process of the water staining, um, from occurring, um, as quickly. It's not a end-all, it's part of the ongoing maintenance for this particular piece of artwork. And so, um, we are not proposing any, any other type of maintenance at this point. It, this is, um, as I've outlined in our staff report, the other option is to apply by hand a, uh, buildup remover. However, that's a very labor-intensive process. It would not be my recommendation for you to go in that route simply because of our staffing levels. And if we are directed to approach it in that way, that means that that's just other work that's not being done throughout the community. And so, um, while it's absolutely your discretion to, to direct staff on how you'd like to proceed in, in terms of how you wanna maintain Califia, I would caution you on that one simply because of the labor-intensive process. So in summary, we have two options before you tonight. One is to move forward with the, um, the ECO dry, uh, dry ice, uh, removal process. There is a little risk involved with that, which I outlined in the staff report. We are gonna be monitoring that work very closely as it's being done. If at any time we start to see damage occurring, we may have to tell the, uh, contractor to dial down the pressure. We may also get to a point where we say, okay, we've gotta stop because, um, it's causing too much damage. It's a little bit of unknown territory for us, but as I stated earlier, this is the best option that we've identified. This is a very unique piece of artwork. We've reached out to the artist, we've tried to get direction on the best way to proceed. Unfortunately, the recommendations that the artist had provided to us did not result in, um, significant improvement. And so we've, we've done some exploring on our own, and, um, I just wanna commend my staff. They spent a lot of time trying to come up with the, the best recommendation. And this is what, where we're at as far as that process goes. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this item.
Any question or comments for Director Van Gilder? Alright, any question or comments from the audience? I do, do have, do have two blue cards. Mr. Treewiler, if you'd like to come up?
I've got pictures of her on my cellphone. Uh, Milt Treewiler.
Of Califia or Allison? Okay.
Califia. I'm gonna say Califia. Yes. I hope you've all gone down and, and taken a look yourself. I think this has been a real learning experience for our city. The fact that we don't have a lot, a lot of artwork here in the city, and of course that means that we have to learn things. And the way to learn things is to get out there and do it. And I just have to commend Ellis's staff for the great work they've done. I walk past her, or the statue, about two or three times a week, and, uh, I've seen them out there working myself. And they're good caretakers, but it's not really their expertise. I mean, this is a piece of art, and we don't have a lot of those in the city, so how is, how are they supposed to know everything that's supposed to be done? And what has been proposed is a very good solution. I did wanna add just a couple other things, because I do walk by her all the time. And I've noticed that, I guess, the staff has reduced the water level, and I think that's an excellent choice. Again, that's part of the learning experience, because I used to walk by there, and there was so much water running out of her fingertips that when the wind came up, it was spraying it all over the sidewalk. And that was excessive, and that was causing the calcification to occur at a more rapid rate. So I think that just the way it is now, they also reduced the level of the water. I've actually got a picture, but that's okay. Where it used to be up maybe six inches from the top, now it's only up about, what, twelve inches, eight inches or so? That's a great improvement. And the flow is so good, because even when it's kinda windy, it's not blowing the water all around, and you still get the same effect. I mean, that's what it's about, the valley's water, and you're getting that effect. So it doesn't distract, detract from anything. I do have one additional question. I'm not sure who I direct this to, but we're taking this out of Fund one-twenty, tourism, unallocated, uh, reserves designed for public art projects to be used. Okay, so that almost gives me the impression that maybe we have, or maybe this same fund, one-twenty tourism, could be used in the future, because obviously there will be another time when this needs to be done. So that's, who would answer that question? As to where does that?
So the fund, uh, that's identified, this is a carryover from the original Downtown Revitalization Project. And at that time, there was funding left over from the original art project to the tune of, I believe, about ten thousand dollars. That's just being carried over annually for any type of future art project. And so, when we were looking at doing this work, we were speaking with finance staff about, you know, what would be the appropriate, uh, source of, of funding for this? And that, that, uh, line number was brought to our attention, that that's exactly what the funding's for. It's for the, the purpose of public art. And so, um, it seemed appropriate. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Allison. Yes, it does. So it does appear as though in the future we could use this fund, or funds from this account. Uh, and I'm just recommending that you, uh, select option A, and I'm looking forward to seeing our beautiful piece of artwork there for many, many, many more years. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, bless me.
Allison, quick question. That ten thousand, where did that originally come from?
That, what, my understanding is that was generated through the original Downtown Revitalization Project, and, um, there was a committee that worked specifically on the element of art, which ultimately ended up being Califia. And so, that funding was not completely expended, and so that ten thousand dollars essentially was, kept, you know, kept rolling over every year, and it's sort of just been sitting waiting for either a need such as this or a, potentially another project.
Okay, but is there any way that we can find out what the source of that was? Did we just move that around from our general fund? Was it through community donations? Where did that ten thousand originate from?
The whole project was RDA, right? Or the majority of? I can, I can bring that information back to confirm, but according to Ms. Pitt, um, because the majority of the Downtown Revital- Revitalization Project was funded by RDA, it's likely that those funds were RDA. I know they've been kept in Fund one-twenty for many years. I mean, Califia's thirteen years old, so it's been something that's carried over, but it's been specifically earmarked for the purpose of public art.
And cannot be used elsewhere? We can't reallocate those funds?
I would assume if council took action to do that, they could, but right, at least the last action that was taken on it, it was left in a specific line number for the purpose of public art. I can bring, you know, follow-up information if it, if that's something that you would like to see.
Kelly, is that something you might be able to answer?
Yes.
Do you guys, do you guys wanna enlighten the, the hundreds of viewers that are out there?
Yes, I will. Uh, we got some feedback from, uh, one of our accountants, Julie Burke. She said that that funding was generated by the Sunny Sa- Sunny Side Up Project. There was revenue, I guess, that council had allocated, but that project, to my understanding, never got off the ground, and so it's been carried over. So, the ten thousand dollars, uh, has always been earmarked for the purpose of public art. So this request that we're making to you is an appropriate expenditure based on council's current, uh, direction for that funding.
Thank you. Califia's thirteen, doesn't look a day over ten, I'll tell you what. Uh, Ms. Ferrari, you're up next.
I think the then-City Council allocated eighty thousand dollars for the public art, um, as it pertained to the Downtown Revitalization. There were two phases, Califia, and the same artist had designed, um, tiles that had all of the ag elements. And they were supposed to remove, um, the pavers from the sidewalks, so there would be a lin- linear would be a linear walkway. And that didn't happen, so there was quite a bit of money that was left over. I don't know where it is, but I'm happy that there's $10,000. Well, anyway, Mayor Council Staff, Jimmy Ferrari, thank you for the opportunity to address Agenda Item 8C, how the city will appropriate funds to address calcium buildup on Caliphia, the downtown gateway statue. Elements that enhance or add interest to a city have costs. Not only is there the initial investment to purchase trees, shrubs, streetlights, public swimming pools, street signs, public art, et cetera, these items will have an ongoing maintenance cost. If it's trees and shrubs, the cost will be pruning and maintaining an irrigation system. If it's streetlights, it's replacing light bulbs. Swimming pool requires regulating chlorine and water. When the then-city council voted to purchase a gateway sculpture by artist Donna Billick, immediately there was discussion about a fund to maintain the public art. I don't know how much money was set aside, and I don't know where it is. However, I have 14 years, I'm incorrect, I guess it's 13. With only minimal maintenance, the statue needs to be restored. The proposed dry ice blasting is the approved technique for cleaning without damaging such artwork. This would be the first professional restoration since Caliphia was installed. If the $3,200 fee is amortized over the 14 years the statue has spent, the downtown's gateway, public art, it would come out to $228.57 per year. The fee seems reasonable. Going forward, if the statue is dry ice blasted in five years, the amortized cost per year would be $640. That would be a monthly investment of $53.33. Certainly, the new technique will restore the statue, and the city can monitor the minimal buildup on an ongoing basis. Thank you for looking into the best method for restoring the colorful statue, which due to minimal buildup has faded over time. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Anstrom? Oh, please select option A and clean Caliphia with an exclamation point. Yes, thank you so much. Yes, Ms. Ward. Very efficient, I appreciate that.
So, Caliphia represents some things to some people, it represents other things to other people. And I researched Caliphia, and her historical place, or mystical place, was a warrior that killed Christians. I was surprised when I read that. And so, I presume that there are some people that like Caliphia, and some people that don't like Caliphia. The problem with Caliphia is her fingers are calcified, and so, there's a little rubber hose, and that's the only thing that's causing the fountains to flow. And the limited water that's flowing through there is causing the smell that you get there, which is actually not a healthy smell. So, you've got a health and safety issue. I agree with staff that you should clean it, because you own it, and it's something you should do. But that's just the first step. You've got to figure out what you're going to do with the statue after that. There's been community discussions about moving it around the corner, there's been proposals to do different things. Allison Van Gilder was kind enough to spend some time to explain to me that there's a process through which someone from the public can initiate a process to consider moving it, maybe not having the water feature, so there isn't the smell, or maybe putting it somewhere where people, as they're walking by, don't have to smell it, because in 13 years, downtown Turlock has changed. It's pretty much an outdoor eatery in the evenings, and there's a lot of people walking up and down the street, and it smells. And some people don't care if it's there. I personally, I don't like it. But that doesn't mean anything. I mean, what we should do is, I think, look at a bigger process, because you're going to have to spend more money on it. The pumps are bad, they're going to have to be replaced. It's not just a matter of doing this repair, you're going to have to do other repairs in the near future. I do think that there could be an effort put together with the community to raise money, to move her, maybe put a fund together so that there's money available. Maybe don't move her, and talk to the community, and see if there's funds available to donate, to repair her and leave her if that's what the community wants. But I think there should be an additional discussion. I'm not opposing tonight's action, because I think, you know, it makes sense to clean it up. It's art, it is artwork, and it's, in many people's eyes, it's art. And so, to vote to clean it up is, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, it's not a lot of money, but I think you'd spend a lot more money in terms of fixing it, and repairing it, and getting rid of what I think is a public health and safety issue. Probably 2014, I think, somebody submitted test results that had the water tested, submitted into Turlock, and it was unhealthy to have that there. And again, one of the reasons that you have the problem there is because there's not sufficient water circulation, because there's too much water. Even though you've reduced the water level, it sits still, and it's not circulating properly. And so, you should consider it. I would love if the city council would schedule this for additional discussion in the future, maybe in a month, to consider options, whether it's leaving it, fixing it, trying to raise private money for it, but let's have a community discussion about it. But you're going to continue to spend public funds on this statue, and I think you have an obligation to deal with the public health and safety issue in terms of the standing water, and the smell and the odor that comes from that. I was, I mean, I smelled it yesterday, so I ask that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Director Van Gilder, can you speak to the process that he referenced? I'm not aware of this, about a potential site relocation, or whatever that might be.
As I explained to Mr. Ward, the council has adopted the public art policy. And so, now that we have that process in place, there is a component in there for the decommissioning of artwork, or the relocation of artwork. And so, according to that process, that conversation starts at the commission level, and there's an application that's involved detailing the request. That will be, a public hearing will be heard by the commission, where the community can come and express their ideas and thoughts about whatever the proposal is. And then, the commission would then make a recommendation to this council for the final determination. So, that's sort of a brief outline of how that would work, but there would essentially be two public hearings to vet and evaluate any kind of proposal like that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Any additional, yes, Mr. Francis?
I've spoken on the Caliphia statue issue prior to this. I believe it got started with a request from Brad Bates at the Parks and Recreation Commission about just having a discussion of relocation. And in that, I think he also addressed issues of items such as the water feature aspect, and that a lot of water features throughout the city have now been, I guess, removed from anything because of the water, of legal, safety issues, sanitation, and just the functionality issues. You know, on the corner of Girona Vista, there used to be the university fountain sign, people putting soap in it and all that. It's just a, it's a cost that a lot of, a lot of government agencies don't have the expenditures for, or the funding for. So, that got brought up and created a whole discussion. I have not heard too much about removing the calcium, but I've heard a lot of other comments, and some's totally debatable, like if it's ugly. That actually is the top comment on Turlock City News, the two posts. But that's not really a policy issue, I don't think. It's art. But also, people were talking about, because we showed the video of the process of the maintenance staff cleaning it, and there was a maintenance worker that was literally carrying bucket by bucket of water out of the statue and dumping it in trees. And of course, you get a flood of comments saying it just looks stupid. I mean, and there's no drain plug. So, these issues have been brought up, like, a lot further prior to, you know, Brad Bates' comments about the relocation. But it seems like we can't get anything done about it, and it's actually costing money. I mean, there's a lot of time in that, and I don't understand why there wasn't a drain plug just put in and done, but a lot of that time is actually sitting there, manually dumping the water, and then actually watching it fill up, because you have to go across the street to turn on a water valve, and you have to be there physically to put a cap back on when you turn it off, or to actually let the water go. So, I guess I'm wondering, how did this get ahead of addressing the staff, the staff maintenance cost issues that were brought up, and the functionality issues? So, there is a drip, a sprinkler drip system tube that's ran up through the hands that's dripping the water out. So, the water function, as it was designed, doesn't even work, and the pumps also burn out that need to be replaced. All these are like actual cost issues the city, I mean, I thought should look at. But those issues can't get addressed, and now we're talking about ice blasting the calcium, which I think is more of an appearance than it is a sanitation for like legal and liability reasons. And the relocation discussion, that actually still has not taken place. So, I think like what was prior, like what was priorly said, was to discuss the whole issue in a comprehensive manner, because even after you get this thing looking better, you still have the functionality issue, you still have the cost issue, you still have the public safety issue, and then also, you have what started all, which was the relocation discussion. And in the relocation discussion, how this ties in, which you also heard about some of the funding, which mentions downtown, is that the property owners actually pay fees and taxes. And there's been a request to relocate the statue, and there's like potential businesses that could be moving in there, like all the other restaurants that have outside door seating. So, we're talking about literal property owners paying fees on that space. And again, when it was put in, like downtown was not the restaurant bar row that it is now, and a gateway, I mean, if there was lines of people that want to take pictures in front of it and all this stuff, then it would be different, but I don't really see that. So, if we're talking about that, now we're talking about like development, or economic development issues, but for downtown. So, I heard the term gateway mentioned, and Brad Bates also brought that up in his relocation. He didn't say anything negative about it, he was saying clean it. I mean, it needs to be cleaned, take the water out, put flowers in it. And in his relocation, there's been discussions about making a whole like welcome to historic downtown backdrop setting, picturesque, put on a platform so people don't use it as a bathroom, like those kind of things. So, I would request that you guys look at the whole picture on a comprehensive plan before spending this, which is very surface. And also, I think that that $3,200, I think that Sunny Side Egg Project was a loan the city made, and it didn't happen, and actually got money back.
Thanks, thank you. Any additional question or comments on this item? All right, bring it back. Council, what's, yes, council members care?
Yeah, I just want a couple, a couple of little clarification statements. First of all, when I first mentioned the maintenance of the statue, it's because constituents approached me about the concerns on the maintenance of it. And the actual issues about moving and all this, to me, that actually came later. So, my original intention was, okay, why aren't we maintaining it? What do we need to do to maintain it? And that's when we directed staff to look into this and come up with some ideas. So, at this point, I think staff has done a pretty good job with the information we gave them, and the direction that we gave them. So, I just want to clarify that part. The whole issue of relocation, I think, is a separate issue, and that, I've never heard anybody officially request that at this point. I've had, heard people talk about it, but I've never seen anybody actually come to us and say, hey, we should, I think he made a suggestion, but I don't think he really said, let's relocate it. So, I'm thinking, and like Allison said, to relocate it's an entirely different process that we need to go through. So, at this point, I think with the proposal we have in front of us, the only question I have, Allison, if we were to take option B, was there a way that we can incorporate eliminating the water issue?
If you were to take option B, to just allow it, oh, A, oh, A. Eliminate the water, at this time, staff is open to any request that council has relative to the artwork. We were responding to what we were hearing primarily, which was about the staining. I've outlined in my staff report the process that we go through to clean the water, essentially replace the water. It is time-consuming, there's no question about it. And, you know, when, if you recall back in March, when I gave my presentation, there was just some general ideas about, you know, how we might be able to address some of those challenges, because the water will continue to stain the statue if that element is allowed to remain. But we've also heard from the community that the water component is an essential element of the artwork. And so, we felt comfortable at this point that we could come forward with an item that specifically addressed the staining. If council wants us to come back with some proposals on how to deal with the water, we're happy to do that. We're really just looking for some direction tonight on how we can move forward to demonstrate that staff is working to try and maintain her. We do care about following through with what your expectations are, but we do need some help with some clear direction tonight.
At this time, I would move to advance the motion. I mean, you can talk to, I'll listen. But I'm going to say, but I also want to look into the elimination of the water as a possible issue also.
Interesting. Councilwoman Dehart, I skipped over you like probably five times in the course of this item, so I apologize.
I'm not offended.
Take as much time as you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think that the breadth of issues that were, that we have before us this evening, excuse Is far greater than if we were talking about a limited issue like pigeon droppings. We're talking about human droppings, and I think that makes it an entirely different issue. The value of the public art, I don't think is in question. I think that what we do have, however, is a fairly profound issue. It comes about every 13, 14 years with the scaling. I think it's absolutely essential to address that issue so that we can at least begin to isolate what our options need to be. When it comes to the other piece, whether it's water, whether it's not, I think you've got the original intent of the artist, which is, of course, what was sold to us and what we desired to hear and to locate in our community. I'm not going to be so bold as Mr. Ward, I'm not going to offer my own personal feelings, except to say that it is something of value, that is valued by many people in our community. So, now, what is the, what is the most responsible way to address the myriad of issues that we're dealing with? There is such a thing as an example of a submersible pump. We don't need to bucket it, and perhaps we've employed that technique now. Extension cord if electricity is not close. Submersible pump works great. I use it in my backyard every year. The reality of it not being pigeon droppings is yet another issue, which is a far greater concern to me. You can, when it smells like human droppings, and it is human droppings, that's a little different issue. And when that floods the downtown, that's not, that's not a neat place to be for an eatery or anything else. So, I think we begin to need, with at least eliminating this, cleaning as an option, step one, perhaps. What do we do at step two? I was appreciative to hear that the artist at least offered something which had not previously happened. That was not an acceptable answer at the time. The fact that what was offered didn't work is yet another issue. I think that does warrant our advice to future park committees to ensure that when we get or acquire public art, that at least care and feeding of that art is properly documented for our uses. I also, I noted that we are hiring this firm, we're not doing it ourselves. My concern, however, is the liability for any damage that might be done. We can say stop, adjust the pressure, but if there's damage already done, what do we do? Are we then talking about a mandatory removal and repair? What's the logical outcome at that point? So, there's several other concerns that I have that are all lined up, stacked up, whatever we want to call them. But I do believe this to be a logical first step to at least begin to isolate the issues that we're dealing with. I think we're going to have to look fairly closely and seriously at posting perhaps one of two signs, perhaps both. Non-podable water, number one. It's not just, you know, regular water, it's non-podable water. And number two, something about pools and what you do or don't, in our pool, or don't in our pool. That type of warning, of advice, needs to be posted rather clearly, because otherwise, this issue is going to continue to come before us, and I don't think that's fair to Caliphia. I don't think that's fair to those that do appreciate and love that art piece. So, I'm kind of straddling the fence on a lot of this stuff here, but I think that the good first step is to at least begin to address, how do we? but I think that the good first step is to at least begin to address, how do we clean it? How can we maintain it going forward? So, thanks.
All right. So, just, yes, of course.
Allison, you mentioned that there is community feedback that the water feature was an essential component. I'm wondering how did we solicit or get that feedback?
It actually occurred in, in one of these meetings. Um, it was Lisa McDermott from the Carnegie who spoke about, uh, I'm not sure if you, you may not have been at that meeting. I can't recall. But she talked about how her students use it as a source of art, and they, they come and draw the water. And she spoke to that, what I just spoke about. And I've, in, in doing, you know, kind of our research of the original project, it, it identified every element on her bodice represents, you know, different crops and different resources in our area, one of which was the water. And I'm sure Jeanie could probably confirm that if that's the case or not. Yeah.
I hope that, that what is on the agenda is what's voted on tonight, and we don't get derailed about other topics. But the water feature was an important feature, um, that this artist, when we did a call for submissions, we wanted something that represented our community, the character, and the heredity, the history. And there were lots of different concepts on that. But we felt this one representing water and ag was incredibly beautiful. And it gave a story about where California's name came from. Um, as far as the water feature goes, I think a water feature can be honored without it being living water. I think from her hands could come water in art form. I think it could be beautifully done by Donna Billick. Um, I, I just don't want to get sidetracked. She needs to be maintained. And, um, if that's a discussion, I hope we vote on that tonight. Um, what comes out of her hands needs to be water. It doesn't have to be living water in my estimation. And, um, I, I love walking downtown. And I don't identify with some of the, um, issues that other speakers have mentioned, so I cannot confirm or validate any of that. But, um, it's a beautiful gateway piece, and I think we're all sort of logic-minded people. And we can, we can deal with this. We can resolve this. But right now, she needs to be maintained.
Thanks. And, and then the, the second part of my question is have we solicited our Park Arts and Rec Commission for recommendations? I mean, that's just one idea. If it's something that can be modified to what we heard was to put flowers there or whatever. I mean, that's not my expertise. I'm not an artist. But I think that's, sounds like a nice idea to make it a painting of water instead of living water, put plants there or something to eliminate a lot of the water-related issues. I think it would make sense maybe to do that. Also, for the fact that it's not, it's gonna stop the calcification process, or we're not gonna be back here in future councils in thirteen years having to spend money on decalcifying it. So, is that something that we've asked our Park Arts and Rec Commission to look into or get their feedback on? And if not, then can we?
We, we have not taken that item because we have not received that direction from council to, to make any, um, uh, modifications to the current artwork. I think that's the key. So, um, you know, if there was some future discussion that council wanted us to take an item back to modify, uh, we, we'd absolutely be happy to do that. Right now, it was primarily just to look at, how do we, we, we need it, we basically need some funds to get her cleaned. That's what we're here tonight, and, and we were asking council to appropriate that. And if you don't, uh, want to do that, then we've given you the option to, uh, give us some direction on allowing her just to put in a naturally. Because we've heard that as well at, at past council meetings, that some people think she looks fine just the way she is. So, recognizing there's differing viewpoints on this issue, the main focus of this item tonight, aside from all the other discussions, is can we get her cleaned via this method?
Additional comments and questions? All right. One of the things, uh, Councilmember Skerr, you, you added on there that you have to eliminate the water issue altogether onto yours. Do you want to keep that?
No, I would really admit it was something that, it was something that I would like to have researched as well to see if we can have that done. Bring that back as a separate issue. Uh, I think we need to have it cleaned, uh, right now. And I would like to see, get more information on eliminating the water feature and with the suggestions about maybe not a liv- living water, something like, suggestions like that. Give me, can bring back some ideas that, that might, uh, that might work for us. So, we're still gonna have to maintain it periodically. But if we eliminate the water, we may not have to maintain it as often.
And if I can, Councilmember Skerr requests an amendment to your amendment, not to bring it back necessarily to us, but take it to the Park Arts and Rec Commission, get their opinion on it. I think that's what we've commissioned them to do. Is that clear?
So, what I'm hearing is you have, uh, option A, and then you have, um, an amendment to direct staff to research the possible elimination of, of actual water and alternatives to that, correct? To, oh, and alternatives. And then the second part is to take whatever finding staff has to park first and then come back to, to the council. Is that what you're saying? And is that, you're fine with that? And that's capturing your intent? Okay. Anything else we have? If that's clear, I just want to, I'm kind of looking at the clerk. She's typing furiously. Because we wanted to read it back properly.
Just to make sure that I have captured the intent. So, I'll have the original language of the resolution. And then what we're adding is directing staff to research the possible elimination of actual water and alternatives, and presenting these options to the park commission first before bringing this information back to the council.
If you're okay.
Yes.
Okay, then we have a motion, then we have a motion by Councilmember Skerr, second by Councilmember Boo Black. Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, so I'll read everything from the. Appropriating three thousand two hundred dollars to account number one-two-zero-one-zero-one-two-zero-one-three-zero-four-seven-three-one-nine from Fund One Twenty Tourism Unallocated Reserves, designated for public art projects to hire Echo Two Clean Dry Ice Blasting LLC to remove the calcium buildup on Califia, with the understanding that the dry ice blasting process may need to be repeated in the future. And directing staff to research the possible elimination of actual water and alternatives, and presenting this information to the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission first before bringing back any options to the city council. Councilmember Skerr?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boo Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, council.
Thanks.
Mayor, can we make a request as well of, uh, Ms. Van Gilder? That when that's scheduled, could you let us know such that we could potentially not in violation of Brown, but at least be down there to observe?
Yes, I'll let you know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item D, request to approve seven annual funding agreements between the City of Turlock and each of the home consortium sub recipients. Ms. Pitt.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, this is an item that you see, uh, may come before you every year. Uh, as you know, that the City of Turlock is the participating jurisdiction to the Turlock-Stanslos County Home Consortium. Um, as you'll note in the attachment to the staff report, is the agreement and the master funding allocations to, uh, the seven cities or the six cities in the county of Stanslos, um, which total one point three eight two million dollars. Um, I appreciated Supervisor Kay's remarks earlier this evening because these monies can be used by the individual cities to help do some kind of, um, affordable housing project. Or it does allow in the agreement for all of us to come together and pool the money to do a larger project in some part of the county, um, which is something that we're, we're trying to do, um, to move forward. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions, but it's very straightforward in terms of, um, as the sub recipients to the participating jurisdiction, we're required to have annual funding agreements.
Absolutely. Any additional questions or comments from the council or the audience? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the council on this item?
Introduce the motion, second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember, uh, Boo Black, second by Councilmember Dehart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Approving the seven annual funding agreements between the City of Turlock and each of the home consortium sub recipients for the purpose of undertaking home eligible housing assistant activities pursuant to Title II of the Cranston Gonzales National Affordable, Affordable Housing Act of nineteen ninety for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of one million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Councilmember Skerr?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boo Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Uh, item E, request to approve the public services grant agreements with seven nonprofit agencies. Ms. Pitt.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. Um, this is also one of those annual, uh, appearances I make, um, behalf of the Community Development Block Grant Funds. Um, the recommendations for funding were originally, um, included in the annual action plan that was presented to you, um, in May. Um, and I did note at that time that, a caveat in that we were having, um, there were some changes as a result of the, um, Howard Training Center and their agreements to provide both senior meals on wheels programs, as well as a congregate site meals. Um, it's been reported in the paper, and we have met with Howard Training Center, that they are no longer interested in doing the congregate meals, uh, for our seniors, um, throughout the county. Um, we felt in Turlock and, and my staff that we needed to make sure that our local seniors, who are the most vulnerable, um, and food insecure, need to be, um, at least figure out some kind of solution. Um, United Samaritan Foundation has stepped up to that call. Um, and so, on a trial pilot basis, we're going to award them a ten thousand dollar grant to assist in facilitating those congregate meals for just our seniors here in Turlock. So, that's the only little small deviation, um, to the original sort of overarching, um, strategy and plan that we outlined in the annual action plan. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Pitt? Any questions from the audience? All right, bring it back. What's the pleasure of the council?
Introduce the motion.
Do you have a second? A motion by Councilmember Boo Black, second by Councilmember Dehart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Approving the public services grant agreements with seven nonprofit agencies for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, funded with Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG funds, and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute all related and necessary documents. Councilmember Skerr?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boo Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Uh, moving on to item F, request to appropriate four hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars to fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen salary and benefit accounts as a result of adoption of tenet agreements with TAPo, TMAPs, TCEA, Turlock Management Group, Interlock Confidential Group for the period seven-one-seventeen to six-thirty-eighteen.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, I wanted to let you know first, I emailed to everyone's city account, the, uh, city email account, the resolution regarding the Sunnyside Up project and the agreement that the city had with the Turlock Downtown Property Owners Association. There was a resolu- resolution adopted that the loan, just like Mr. Franzen said, that the city gave them in ten thousand when it was paid back, which it was according to the loan schedule, that it would be put into reserve for public art projects. Okay? And if anyone has any questions, everything should be there. But they, they did repay the loan per the loan agreement, and so, we are hold, we hold those funds in reserve for public art projects. Okay? Um, now, to the item before you. Um, item, uh, AF is the fiscal impact to the two thousand eighteen, nineteen adopted general fund and non-general funds for the, uh, negotiations and the MOU amendments that were actually adopted by council in November of two thousand seventeen for fiscal year. They were effective in fiscal year seventeen, eighteen. These are the ongoing costs, and this is the effects to fiscal year eighteen, nineteen adopted budget. These dollar amounts have always been included in, in the estimates or any of the PowerPoints that showed where the general fund reserve was planned to be at. So, um, that three hundred and, um, thousand, that's, uh, general fund has always been reflected in there. It's just, this is the actual budget amendment resolution. So, we can make, uh, do the official amendment in the eighteen, nineteen budget. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions and comments for Director Jacob Center? Any question, comments from the audience? Okay, bring it back. What's the pleasure of the council?
Introduce the resolution.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Council, Councilmember Boo Black, second by Councilmember Dehart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Appropriating four hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars to fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen salary and benefit accounts from each respective funds unallocated reserves as the result of adoption of tenet agreements with Turlock Associated Police Officers, TAPo, Turlock Management Association, Public Safety, TMAPs, Turlock City Employees Association, TCEA, Turlock Management Group, and Turlock Confidential Group for the period of seven-one-seventeen through six-thirty-eighteen. Councilmember Skerr?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boo Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Moving on, uh, item G, request to rescind resolution number two thousand fifteen dash zero-six-two and adopt a new resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Turlock and the Turlock Associated Police Officers and appropriate eight hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred and nine dollars to fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen salary and benefit accounts.
Thank you, mayor. Um, this item is a result of a meet and confer with, uh, the Turlock Associated Police Officers Group. Um, we have come to an agreement with them for fiscal year, uh, or effective July first of eighteen, and this agreement will go through June thirtieth of nineteen. Um, the one-year agreement is, uh, due to the fact that we will be discussing, discussing, excuse me, um, healthcare options starting in January, so we just wanted to do a one-year agreement. Um, this, uh, the, uh, adjustments to the MOU are per the authority that was granted, uh, to the labor negotiation team by the council. And all the changes are reflected, um, within. And this also includes the budget amendment, so I won't be coming back going, this is the budget amendment. Does anyone have any questions?
Question and comments for Kelly. How about from the audience? All right. Bringing it back, uh, what's the pleasure of the council on the side? Do you have a second? We have a motion by Vice Mayor Jacob, second by, uh, Councilmember Boo Black for both resolutions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Rescinding resolution number two thousand fifteen zero-six-two and adopting a new resolution approving the memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the City of Turlock and the Turlock Associated Police Officers, covering the period of July one, two thousand eighteen through June thirty, two thousand nineteen, appropriating eighty, eight, excuse me, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and nine dollars to fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen salary and benefit accounts from Fund One Ten, General Fund Unallocated Reserves, due to the adoption of the memorandum of understanding with the Turlock Associated Police Officers, TAPo, covering the period of seven-one-eighteen through six-thirty-nineteen. Councilmember Skerr?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boo Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa.
Yes, motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Uh, item H, request to rescind resolution number two thousand sixteen one-four-eight and adopt a resolution establishing amended and restated voluntary campaign contribution regulations, additional voluntary requirements for disclosures and campaign sta- statement filings, and adopt a voluntary code of fair campaign practices. Uh, Mr. Sanchez.
Uh, mayor, members of the council, Jose Sanchez, interim city attorney. The item before you, as the mayor mentioned, is rescinding the previously adopted resolution establishing, uh, campaign regulations and limitations. Um, as the council knows, on January twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen, the council adopted resolution twenty sixteen one-four-eight establishing this voluntary campaign contribution, uh, regulation. They, it also added disclosure requirements and made the council members actually sign an oath of whether they accepted such regulations or such limitations or not. Political contributions, they are protected under the First Amendment. Uh, however, the law does allow for such resolutions that limit or add different regulations to what can be contributed or how much limitations. Um, the, the council went through quite a bit of, uh, different hearings and public input and discussions in order to adopt the resolution. The resolution, amongst other things, did have, did have a one thousand per person, um, uh, voluntary limit campaign contribution. It also had disclosure requirements of anybody that disclosed, or anybody that, uh, contributed or lent one dollar or more. Since adoption of that resolution, there has been several questions that have come up. Is this voluntary? What part of the resolution is voluntary? What part of the resolution is, 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 uh, mandatory? On March tenth of this year, the council appointed the mayor and councilmember Skerr to serve on an ad hoc, to meet, to see if the ad hoc could clarify some of these issues and possibly recommend amendments to the resolution. The ad hoc has been, uh, at work, uh, meeting and looking at, well, how can we clarify some of these issues that keep coming up? The staff report does highlight some of the changes, and I'll go through them quickly. But it also, um, instead of just adding the resolution, there is also a red line to the packet for reference purposes, kind of showing the, the changes that were made. The goal here was to keep the, almost the integrity of the previous resolution, but adding- The goal here was to keep the, almost the integrity of the previous resolution, but adding the clarifying statements. Amongst other things, the resolution, it maintained the voluntary limitation on campaign contributions to $1,000 per person per election cycle. Again, the key word voluntary. It also clarified that the Turlock pledge to the limit campaign contribution was voluntary. It made additional requirements, or it clarified the requirements for the $1 or more contribution to disclosure, where now it clarified that that disclosure is also voluntary. No longer does it need to disclose the actual amount. It did change the disclosure to only be the name of the person disclosing. An important, an important change that this ad hoc thought was, was key here was to also make clear that the additional disclosure happens in an additional form that's going to be created by, by our city clerk. She has already had, has a template, which is basically has a space for folks' name. What we wanted to avoid was the, almost the commingling of your form, the 460, I believe, that the Political Reform Act requires for contributions, where all of a sudden if this got put in there and then got reported to the FPPC, the FPPC is looking at it and their requirement is $100 or more. So it kind of started getting some confusing there. Also, the, the, the resolution clarifies that the due date for this, or the times you have to submit this additional requirement also matches when your 460s do. There were some questions of, wait, when do I have to actually report my contribution? When I get it, the same day? Do I need to go to City Hall, change my form? It just, it almost, it, it mirrors the process of your Form 460, which was required by the Political Reform Act, but it does have, it's a different form submitted to the city. So those were some of the changes and, and the ad hoc, I, I wasn't kidding when I said that they were hard at work. They actually even met. We had some discussions, even over the weekend through messages and then we met briefly right before the meeting. There were a couple of changes, again, in order to, that I'll read into the record, but in order to keep the, the issue of consistency throughout the resolution and also the, the theme of it being voluntary, just a few changes were made right before the council meeting. The Section 3 of the resolution, which is City of Turlock voluntary pledge to limit campaign contributions, it started off stating within five days. Went ahead, the ad hoc went ahead and changed all the requirements at 10 business days, simply because we have a holiday coming up. Five business days goes by pretty quick. It seemed like we had some additional time. The new paragraph, making some other changes, is going to read, "Within 10 business days following the effective date of this resolution, the mayor and all members of the city council must execute and file with the city clerk their initial City of Turlock voluntary pledge to limit campaign contribution, contributions form incorporated here in his Exhibit A voluntary pledge indicating whether they voluntarily accept or not accept to limit campaign contributions pursuant to Section 2 of this resolution." Again, the key to that first paragraph, the changes that were made, was to make clear that it is voluntary. The other changes were, just briefly, Section 5 voluntary disclosure of top 10 maximum contributors. The way that the language was written before made it seem as though it was mandatory to submit those, the, this, the top 10. However, some amendments were made, "Within 10 business days following the effective date of the resolution, the mayor and each council member of the city council," and here's where it changes, "agreeing to the disclosure requirements under this section must provide the city clerk with the list of each member's top 10 contributors and/or the list of all maximum contributors." That was a change to the first sentence, changing it from shall to making sure that the folks that are agreeing to this limitation. The last change was just on the last page. There's a subsection A. It's all it's doing is changing it from within five business days to within 10 to be consistent with all the other deadlines of the, of the resolution. With that, I know the ad hoc probably has some words and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Iskare?
Actually, not much to say. When we first formed the ad hoc to, to work on this, the main issue was the clarity as far as voluntary versus mandatory or non-voluntary. I think we worked on cleaning up the language as best we could without really changing too much of the actual body. It's pretty clear now that it is voluntary. Once you, once you agree to do this, then it lays out the procedures that we need to follow. So, I think, I think we've, we did what we were asked to do.
So I just want to thank Councilmember Iskare and also Mr. Sanchez. Again, it wasn't to tackle the substance of it, it was to tackle the clarity and nothing really changed. The dollar or more is still there, the $1,000 maximum. It's to, to also bring about some uniformity of how we submit our information. Some people are supplying addresses, some people are supplying just names. Putting on the 460s, I think that was a very important distinction to separate that from the 460s so that we just provide the state what they're requiring, so we don't trip up with those actual requirements. But we also make sure we have that information available for here, for anyone that, that needs it. So, thank you so much for working hard on that and I think that it, it hits the mark. I think Councilmember Iskare, you said it best too in our discussions, that there's always an opportunity later on, if there's substantively changes later on, if we don't like the dollars, 25 or 50 or 100, that's something for future councils to consider. I think for us at the time, it's important that we keep with the substance that we passed previously and just offer some clarifying changes. So with that, if no one else on the council is, yes, Mr. Bates, if you'd like to come forward. Anyone else from the public as well?
Brad Bates, thank you, Mayor, Council. I just want to make sure that I misunderstand this clearly. I'm looking at the, the staff report. It's under the discussion of the issue. They're not numbered, but it's the, the fifth bullet point. I'll go ahead and read it. Only require that the full names of the contributors contributing or lending $1 or more be disclosed. No longer does the amount need to be included as part of the supplemental form. So basically what you're saying is, anybody that donates more than a dollar, you have to list them by name, but not include the amount. So you essentially just have a list of names. Okay, so you could have a list of 200 names of people that gave you a dollar and you would essentially have an ad hoc support list because all you have is a list of names. You following me? Was that your intent?
It actually was in the example that I provided when we did go through this, that those that provided a dollar to $99, that yes, it was just a list of names that we, we provide and then $100 or more is obviously recorded with the FPPC, so the 460 has that, that amount attached to it. So that was in the example that I provided when we first passed it. So that's what we thought was most simple.
And the city clerk will provide the form, correct?
Correct.
Was that produced in the staff report?
No, the, the template has not been, I'm working on it, it's in draft form and it has not been provided as an attachment in the staff report.
Okay, because it'll just be a list of names?
Essentially, I will have some information just to include where we've got standard information, either the candidate name or committee name, the date that you're reporting, similar to that the FPPC form, 460 has, so that the period that it's covering. And then you'll be able to list your names according based upon the information that you have to provide.
I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that, that you're going to stick with the $1 requirement of a contribution and those names must be listed, but there will be no dollar amount attached to it until the person donates $100 or more, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Yes.
I just want to bring up, it just seems like a lot of stuff this council does is political because Steven Osamano ran for city council against Councilwoman Booblaq and she won. But in that, there was an article, and it's factual, that he violated the Campaign Finance Reform pledge that he signed and was a big pusher of. It wasn't his version, of course, but he signed it. But the whole thing was to disclose, you know, who, who, who gave and what amount. And in this, it's just saying that, actually, let me just read this, so it's verbatim.
Which article is this? I'd like to-
This is on TurlockCityNews.com.
Okay.
And this was with your quote. You were just saying that, in this discussion, it seems like now this is unclear, but in here you say, "It's a stringent, simple, and straightforward resolution. Any and all contributions of $1 or more by a donor will be reported on the 460 forms, clarified, Mayor Soisa." And that you're one of the authors of the resolution. So, I mean, explain to the public how it was so stringent, I mean, stringent, simple, and straightforward resolution. Now it required an ad hoc committee. Now it's being revised right before election filing. I mean, it just looks political. I'd like to know how it went from that to unclear and needing a lot of discussion, even a lot of work, I guess.
So the stringent and straightforward is based off of the, the numbers that we came up with, the dollar to 1,000, so that's what was referenced. As far as the FPPC Form 460, it is important that we make sure we are not violating any state laws and that we give them a clear, concise form as candidates that complies with all laws, so we don't trip up there. The intent is for us to make sure we are disclosing the names of the individuals that donate to us and it's all about clarity. We're not turning our city clerk into a police officer that is going to go make sure that we're on compliance. We're going to provide this. If people do not want to adhere to the voluntary contribution limits, they don't have to. But this is for us as a template, as a guideline, to try and help the public know who donates to our campaigns and it's, it's very straightforward. Additional questions and comments from the audience? All right, bringing it back. Is there additional question? Yes, Councilmember Iskare and then Councilmember DeHart and then whoever else.
Yes, just wanted to clarify a little bit. I think one of the reasons that we decided, just through the names, is because if you're doing a small fundraiser and you've got somebody out there that wants to help you out and it gives you five bucks, okay? It's a donation, you've reported. But you may not want to put, well, so-and-so gave me five bucks, because now he's going to feel like, "Wow, I look, I got cheapskate, man, I only gave five bucks." So, we gotta look at that too. We're trying to, we're trying to be fair. The, the complaint that came by originally was that the, the clarity wasn't transparent on, is this voluntary or mandatory? And I think that's kind of what we worked on and personally, I didn't think we needed to spend a lot of time on this because we had several issues that we need to be working on. And like the mayor said, I, I, I said that, you know, if the, if the, after the election in November, they want to look at this more comprehensively and come up with a better version, great, I'll be willing to work on that too. But in the, I, I think we, we took the task of making it clear that this is voluntary because that was the original complaint that came to us. And that's what we worked on.
Councilmember DeHart?
Thanks, Mayor, yes. I'm just wondering if we have any, if there was any consideration of somebody that would like to participate in the political process but does not want their name listed for whatever reason, whether it's due to employer stigma, whatever. Was there any additional consideration given on that? I don't recall I remember being involved in the process previously, but I don't really recall that we ever really addressed that issue. And I do see it as an issue, simply because I think there, there are those that would love to participate, but you publish my name? There's that portion of it, but then is there a binding assumption in, in this that says if somebody doesn't want their name published, that we have to return the funds? Or is that part voluntary too? That would be my only concern.
Absolutely, and I think that something has come up in the course of researching this and I know that the last discussion we did, well, a year and a half, two years ago, whenever it was, was also that there's many people in the community that do the $99 purposely for this reason, but also to do multiple $99 with different fan members and different businesses. And so it comes right under the, the radar and so they actually become a large donor, fairly large donor with, without reporting it. The idea was that it's very simple, that it's a dollar or more, these are the names. There's nothing to hide as to who supports us. And so these are things that we can consider past, I think, I agree with Councilmember Iskare, past election, the new council, whoever the composite, composition is, can, can explore those. Mr. Sanchez, you talked about the FPPC providing a lot of other different ordinances. There's a lot of different ordinances out there. So we could always relook at that. So, I think that this is a very good ordinance, especially with the clarifying points. So yeah, there was consideration, I think, that at the time, we're trying not to change too much substance here, Councilmember Iskare and I as an ad hoc.
So if somebody says, "Hey, I'd like to contribute, but don't publish my name," what is the answer?
Unfortunately, if you're, if you're adhering to the voluntary contribution, it's up to you as a council member to disclose that $199. But you don't have to adhere to the voluntary. That's, that's a pledge folks don't have to make. I said, just, yes?
So I, I have to actually agree with former councilmember Nascimento. He, he said it didn't have teeth. I, I experienced it, it, it didn't. I, I lived by it, I, I did exactly what I was supposed to do. It, it doesn't have any teeth. Who's going to police it? Who, who cares? I actually think that when I made the oath that an actual judge is administering to us about ethics, that says who you are. You're saying in front of everybody, "I'm going to be ethical, I'm not going to be trying to hide things." This is all voluntary, it's, it's cumbersome, teethless, and I just don't see this being of any benefit. We've, we've tried it, I experienced it. Gil, I don't think you actually, you didn't sign on it, did you? Did you?
I signed it. If you look at it, I said, "I signed it, I don't agree with the way it's written."
Right, okay. So, it's just, for me, I just think that we're, we're getting nowhere and we're, we're becoming government. We're, we're getting too involved when there's already rules. It's like, there's a, a federal law and the state wants to supersede. We're doing the same thing, we're telling the state we're going to do something else. And if, if there's, staff needs more things to do, gosh, I could come up with some other things than, than just this.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? And again, I think it should be reiterated that it's not compulsory to, to do this so if you feel it doesn't have to, if you don't have to adhere to it. Do I have a consideration on the motion to-
I'll, I'll make a statement as well. I originally was on the two of the 3-2 vote against this because I didn't think it went far enough at the time, but my view is that it's better to do something and have that option available for potential candidates than to just not do anything at all. So, I'd be willing to advance the resolution.
Do I have a second on that one? Yes? You're being gentleman though. All right, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Jacob, second by Councilmember Iskare.
Before we, before we take the, the, the roll, Mayor, just, just to be clear, the motion was with the changes that were read into the record and the resolution will also reflect, as it does, that it does rescind the previous resolution. This will be a, a new, your new, your new resolution.
Perfect. Is that okay with you, Vice Mayor? Is that okay? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Rescinding resolution number 2016-148 and adopting a resolution establishing amended and restated voluntary campaign contribution regulations, additional voluntary requirements for disclosures and campaign statement filings, and adopting a voluntary code of fair campaign practices. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
No.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soisa.
Yes, motion carries four to one, thank you so much. Item I has been removed, staff updates, we have none. We have a verbal though from municipal services. I shouldn't say we have none, there's a written one from the fire department, a written from county services and a writ, written from police department. We got that, yeah. I saw you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just giving you a verbal update to my written report that's in the back of your council packet. And I hate to bring you bad news, but as I reported earlier in the year, on January 1st, the State of California designated the chemical trichloropropene, or TCP, as a contaminant in drinking water. They set the limit at five parts per trillion. And one, one part per trillion is a very low level and it's the equivalent of one second in 32 years. So, I should imagine it wouldn't be much time. I think that's five seconds in 32 years, it's not a lot of concentration, but that's the regulation and our labs now that can test for that level. So we had two wells that were high-waisted off immediately. Routine monitoring over the course of this year shows four wells with occasional hits of TCP. Two of the wells are showing low concentrations and steady hits of, of TCP. And so the state has sent us a notice of violation under the regulation that says you must notify all your drinking water, drinking water customers, you have two wells that don't meet the state's new standard for drinking water. You have a contaminant. And we have to notify everybody initially, within 30 days, that'll be in July, go on the July bill, July 10th, and then every three months thereafter if we keep those wells on. As I've reported earlier in the year, we're down to 16 wells right now and on hot nights, those wells are running flat out to keep up with demand. So we can't really shut those two wells off, we just won't meet supply. And so notices will be going out, we'll be doing a press release too to notify the public. There is no immediate health effect and that's the, the issue I really want to get across is, yeah, it's a contaminant, we know it's a problem, we have three years until- across is, yeah, it's a contaminant, we know it's a problem, we have three years under state law to address it, but there is no immediate health concern. This won't make you sick, this won't make you ill, uh, none of those issues. It's a concern if you drink a lot of this water for a long period of time, seventy-plus years. And so, uh, full faith and confidence in our drinking water supply, if there was an issue, I'd let you know and we would do something more drastic. So there will be a press release, I'll be asking for the council if they want to add quotes to that. Um, the main concern to get across to our customers is there is no immediate health concern. You're fine, you don't need to switch to a bottle of water. It's not, uh, you know, it's a concern, but it's not an immediate health effect. But again, that won't stop people from being concerned and you getting phone calls and, you know, and calls at the office here. So we'll, we'll do them as they come in. There's about forty-five communities in the San Joaquin Valley dealing with the same thing right now. We've all been doing monitoring, six months has gone by, um, and so after two quarters, people are getting hits like we are and dealing with the same issue. So we're not unique, um, and you'll be hearing more of this over the next few months, I'm sure, but we're caught up in that. So I just want to bring that to your attention. Um, on the, on the bright side, the, um, thirty million dollar low interest loan for the North Valley Recycled Water Pipeline was approved by the state. That's a, that's a really big deal. As you know, we've already received a four-point-three million dollar grant and the potential for another three million dollar grant from the state. So, uh, things are looking good on that and in your July twenty-fourth meeting, we're looking to award bid and move ahead and start the groundbreaking for that project. So that's exciting, that's been six years of hard work by you here on the city council and our staff. As I mentioned, July twenty-fourth, you'll see the bids for the North Valley project. With the, another piece of good news on Prop sixty-eight was passed by the California voters at the last election and in there is a set aside of thirty million, thirty million dollars for the SRWA drinking water project. So that will actually help drive down the cost of that project and, uh, that, those savings will then be passed over to our customers in terms of lower rate increases over time. So that's fantastic news and we're, working with towns and associates who met the last meeting to figure out how to pry that money out of the state coffers and one we can use, that can use it for planning and design or do we have to use in construction, but I'll keep you updated as things go along. One of our, uh, last meetings, uh, Mr. Treewallor asked about conservation signs. So we had some more made and there's some out there in the lobby and we have plenty more. So if you need some, let us know. And I did notify you, a couple of issues we're having at the wastewater treatment facility, uh, a couple of pieces of key equipment have gone down. Staff has done a great job of keeping things going with what they have. Uh, we found a couple of ways to do some, um, repairs by ordering some new equipment and get some help with an existing contractor. So things are better than they looked a few days ago because you have great staff looking at every option and, but we will be bringing back some, um, a budget resolution the next month or so. We did spend about probably five hundred thousand dollars on new equipment to install and that's all proprietary, one-of-a-kind equipment made in, in Salt Lake City. So that will meet, need a budget adjustment, but these are the days when you're glad you have, uh, reserves that you can appropriate and fund, uh, for ten water quality to, to deal with these issues as they arise. So it's made due to corrosion, all of, uh, metal parts that corrode in that harsh environment. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on those items.
Any question that comes? Yes?
Mr. Cook, is there any monetary, uh, concern over the violation of TCP?
No, there is no monetary violation, but thank you for reminding me on the monetary side. You will be seeing something soon with the new city manager about options to pay for, uh, wellhead treatment for TCP. We have set money aside in our rate, um, structure to pay for some wellhead treatment, but other cities are pursuing litigation against the chemical companies who use this contaminant in their pesticides. Other cities have been very successful in prying money out of Shell and Dow Chemical and Attorney Sanchez has been working with his contacts to put an item together for your future consideration so we may look at that path of, of litigation or other settlements with chemical companies to find a way to help pay for the wellhead treatment or new wells or surface water, whatever it is to make up for that lost supply.
So just in follow-up to the term violation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, basically it's a, it's a...
Non-monetary.
Non-monetary. Uh, it's a smack on the hand that says continue to monitor and you may need or be required to take action should it...
Right. You have, you have, keep monitoring, you have three years to address this issue and keep your customers informed. Those are the three things we have to do and that's what we're doing.
Additional question or comments? Thanks so much, Michael. I mean, Director Cook, sorry. Uh, moving on, Matt, it's too late for the agenda, non-agenda items. Not seeing any council items for future consideration. Yes, councilmember Booblaack?
I'm hoping that, uh, Mr. Sanchez will be able to give us an update at our next meeting in regard to the, uh, the incremental one percent, uh, increase that we were talking about a couple of months ago in revenue that you were going to look into for, uh, the business permits, the cap. It was supposed to go up one percent and we were going to find out if we could get it all retroactive or...
I think we are still working with, uh, with staff to get those numbers, but we could definitely prepare a report after working with staff, with finance staff.
Just lines. Uh, council comments, any council comments from the left? Yes, councilmember Dehart?
If there was capability to, uh, councilmember Asker would also turn on his mic. The activities of the ad hoc committee with respect to medical cannabis, uh, have commenced. Uh, we're in the research exploration, attempt to understand what the ramifications are within given communities and that effort will continue. We'll attempt to expedite and have some information, uh, for this council and the public here before too very long. Some of the information, uh, thus far has been rather astounding.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that, yes. Uh, yes, councilmember Booblaack?
So, uh, councilmember Asker and I sat through the entire homeless, uh, committee meeting. Um, there were five breakout, uh, groups. I signed up for one. I, if I'm doing my math, I think each one of you guys should be able to do that and we can all, uh, take a bite out of, uh, the issue and come back. Mine's, uh, business and bathrooms. So, uh, we're going to be meeting soon and I'll, I'll bring you back to that, but hopefully everybody's able to, to meet. I know we, we polled a week before whether we could or couldn't make the meeting, so I thought it's going to be posted. So I'm hoping in the future...
California is gearing up for a recession, so I'm thinking we should probably be paying attention to what's happening and, uh, make sure we don't get caught, uh, in a bind. So, uh, I hope, uh, we're just paying attention for something.
Absolutely. Councilmember Dehart?
Thanks, mayor. Yes, I, just one other thing. Last Monday, week ago, I had an opportunity to travel to Sacramento to speak to the Transportation Commission about the SB one funds. Uh, the reality is that the attempt, uh, nobody likes taxes, don't get me wrong, but I think that the, um, uh, effort to repeal SB one is, is certainly there, it's very real. Uh, there's in excess of five thousand project, uh, projects statewide that would, uh, they're either in process or about to commence that are in jeopardy should that pass. Uh, so I did have the opportunity to speak to Turlock's one point, uh, six million over the next ten years, um, with respect to, you know, how important those funds were to us and the fact that they were, uh, at least the first year, uh, first two years committed